To present their zoning bylaw review project kickoff overview.
Ruth?
Thank you Chairman O'Donnell. Ruth Perrine, I will call the Essex Board of Selectmen meeting to order for January 25th, 2023 for the joint meeting of the Essex Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. Andrea, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Hi, good evening. So this evening we have Andrea and Courtney from MAPC.
Thank you. And I just want to make sure Courtney's audio is working. Courtney, can you hear us? He may be having issues with his audio, but hopefully it'll come in. And then Brendan, how would you like us to share the presentation for this evening? All right, I think, can y'all see my presentation now?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. It's a little hard to hear you Brendan, so sorry if I didn't hear you at first.
Where he was out of the microphone range.
Okay, perfect. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us tonight. And it sounds like maybe the winter storm is not as bad as it was maybe forecasted. So we do appreciate you being flexible. We wish we were able to be there in person. But Courtney Lewis, my colleague is on the line as well, and you'll meet him a little bit later. But we have a full agenda for you all tonight. We're excited to kick off phase two of the project. We'll do a brief introduction since I know there are some new folks on the board. We'll briefly recap phase one, and then we'll get into phase two going over what the project entails over the next year. And then Courtney will talk about the Section 3A work that he's been doing to see how your current zoning complies with that new requirement. And then we'll go over the outline for the potential reorganization of your bylaw. And throughout this, we have opportunities for you to sort of give us additional feedback. So we have a lot of content, but hopefully it can be more of a dialogue. And then, of course, at the very end, we'll be really getting into the weeds of all of the content and then talking about the next steps for the first parts of the project. So just a quick introduction. So Courtney and I are both land use planners with MAPC, the Regional Planning Agency for the 101 cities in town.
Andrea, can I pause you for one moment? Could you possibly speak a little slower?
And more distinctly, if possible.
Oh.
The audio's not great.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. I'll try to slow down. I am a fast talker normally, so I'll try to slow down and speak as coherently as I can. So the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, we do represent the 101 cities and towns shown here on the map. And we just wanted to sort of give you a sense for who we are. We do provide technical assistance for a range of planning types of projects, working towards smart growth and regional collaboration goals across the region. And as you all know, there are lots of people that we're working with on this project. We are working with the town staff, Brendan and Deana, the Board of Selectmen with Ruth serving on our steering committee. And then, of course, we'll be working really closely with the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. And then Courtney and I are the primary planners on the project, but we will be bringing in Chris Kuchel, one of our land use managers. He's an expert in form-based code and zoning, and so we'll be working with him since this is a pretty big zoning project. We wanted to take a minute to kind of go over the different roles and responsibilities. So while phase one was more of a zoning diagnostic where Courtney and I were doing a lot of background research and trying to understand, you know, what your zoning bylaw looked like, we're going to be working a lot more closely with you with phase two because we'll be really drafting bylaw amendments and having a lot more discussion. And so we just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page with how the project will flow. So we'll be really looking for town staff and you as Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen to really be providing us feedback during these meetings to make sure that you're guiding us in the right direction. We also will look to you to help us promote and participate in different engagement events once we get started with those community engagement forums that we have planned. And then, of course, you know, be equipped to answer questions about the project from your neighbors and town members. And then Courtney and I will be doing most of the drafting of the bylaw amendments, but we'll look to you to review the materials that we're drafting and coordinating with your town council and other representatives at the town as necessary. And then there is, there is a steering committee that's, you can see the folks here who are on this group. This is a smaller group who's working closely with Courtney and I to do the management of the project and then review some of the more in-the-weeds materials, things that will be related to our outreach events, helping prepare for when we're doing these full-board conversations. And then the steering committee town representatives will be able to provide periodic updates regularly to both you as boards and then any of the other boards and committees in town that are interested in the project. And again, helping to promote and participate engagement when possible. And then Courtney, Chris and I from the MAPC side will be kind of doing the boots-on-the-ground work of writing those bylaw amendments, bringing things to you to review, and then hearing what you have to say and trying to incorporate the revisions as best as possible. And then we'll also be helping to facilitate the conversations about the changes and the reorganization with boards and also the town residents whenever we're meeting with the public. And then we'll also make sure that we're collecting that public feedback like we did during phase one and kind of synthesizing all of the public comments that we're hearing and presenting that to you for consideration through the process. Is the audio okay?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. So we've really just briefly wanted to recap phase one for those of you who may not have been as involved in the first part of the project. So as I mentioned, phase one really happened over winter-spring of '21-'22, and that was really when we performed the zoning diagnostic. And then we helped the town apply for the planning grant to fund phase two. And we, the town got that funding in fall, and so now here we are in phase two, starting to implement the findings of phase one and the zoning recommendations. Phase one consisted of a few key components. So we did a significant existing conditions analysis where we looked at the past plans that the town had completed, kind of trying to get a sense for the policy direction of the different boards and committees. We did a lot of GIS analysis, looking at land uses and environmental constraints, different parcel characteristics, and how that aligns with your zoning. And then we also conducted a lot of public engagement. We did one-on-one interviews with people really familiar with the bylaw. We looked at how your bylaw stacked up against some of the zoning best practices that have emerged over time. And then we also looked for things like statutory compliance, things that make sure that your bylaw is operating consistent with what's required in state law. The public engagement was pretty diverse, and we had a few focus groups. We did an online survey that was really great. We had over 400 participants. We had two virtual forums, almost a little over 150 people participated. And then we, of course, had the one-on-one interviews, and we advertised on websites, social medias. We got coverage in the Gloucester Times. So we tried to really reach a lot of different folks. And then the goals being, again, to understand the existing land use patterns, really start to understand what Essex residents were getting out of the zoning bylaw and what they wanted to see change, and then also, again, just consider best planning practices. So in the end, we have the zoning diagnostic report. We released that in May after working with you all, Planning Board, over a series of meetings. That kind of consolidated all of those existing conditions findings, the policy context, the community feedback that we heard, and culminated in eight recommendations. The recommendations ranged from specific things that could be changed in your bylaw, like codifying and possibly expanding zoning districts, looking at updating dimensional standards and use regulations, to aligning the zoning to community values with expanding housing options, entrepreneurship, environmental stewardship, different things that had come up through the public process. And then a few of the recommendations were more focused on administration, so making the bylaw user-friendly, easier for you all to administer and enforce. And then lastly, emphasizing that any changes to the bylaw really must have a robust community engagement strategy. So I might pause here and see if there are any questions from phase one before we get into phase two.
No questions, Andrea.
All right. So phase two is the fun part. It's implementation. So we obviously can't implement all of the recommendations of the zoning diagnostic report. So with your direction, we're focusing on better aligning the bylaw with the goals that you've laid out. Lisa shared the Planning Board priorities that you all had worked on in a previous meeting. And then we know that you really want to focus on making the bylaw more user-friendly right off the bat, and then also making sure that the town's complying with Section 3A. And then we also will continue to build on those relationships and the engagement that we did with phase one and try to get those people to continue to be engaged in phase two so that the bylaw amendments continue to reflect what the town really wants to see. So here's the list of goals that you all have provided as the Planning Board priorities. We wanted to get clarity on two specific ones, the understanding what's regulated through the zoning bylaw and what other rules and regulations may cover, and affordable housing. Those were just a little unclear to Courtney and I whenever we had gotten the initial list, but we did want to take time during this meeting to see if either board had anything additional to share on any of these priorities or any additional context that you would like us to know going forward as we move through the process. And if you, if you want to share ideas now, you can, or if you want to wait and share those at a later time whenever we're talking about that annotated outline, that's fine too.
So I would just be interested in the project goal about affordable housing. What was the thought of the group? And, and how do you, where, where, where do we feel that's going to go?
Affordable housing is one of the categories that Andrea has a box around, so that's something that we need to discuss more. We don't, we know there's a lack of affordable housing in Essex, but we also don't know what the need and the appetite is for it. We have recently formed the Housing Trust, right Ruth?
Familiar.
So, yeah, no, I know. You guys are very familiar with that. So that's a group that's going to be looking into that. And as Ruth has explained, the concept that I think so far that Essex is trying to develop is just to sort of knit it into our community. And so it's, it's understanding what we need, how we can implement it, and what's appropriate for our community. So it's sort of an open-ended concept right now.
Right, so it's not an affirmative statement. It's more of an exploratory statement.
Exactly. It's something we need to understand what our community needs and wants in that category, and then to work to see how we can implement it, because it's difficult to implement. Yeah, so between Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, and mainly the Housing Trust, we'll be exploring that further. And, and so at the beginning of this process, we don't actually know what that looks like yet, but it's something we want to keep on the radar because we know it's a concern.
Thanks.
That wasn't much of an answer, but.
Well, if I can interject and just say that the first meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust will actually be next week on the 30th, and I think we're going to have more clarity in the direction of the entire board after that meeting. So we're probably going to have to table this, the affordable housing green box on screen until we have a direction from the entire board.
Which is fine because there's a lot of other things on the screen we can work on.
So are you saying that the affordable housing will be only about the Affordable Housing Trust's work? I mean, is that the implication when you're saying we have to decide what it's going to be before we?
No, but I, from a personal perspective, made a comment at a Planning Board meeting that when affordable housing was discussed as part of this MAPC project, I know that you Simone actually had said, are we trying to say that we're going to have a zone that's affordable housing or an area that we're going to, you know, stick in the corner of our town and say this is the only place we're putting affordable housing? And I said to you, that doesn't feel inclusive to me. I'd like to make sure that they're woven into our entire community and that we kind of keep the character as to what it is. If we have a dilapidated two-family that we can renovate and create affordable housing and it just fits right into the same structure, that would be awesome. But I think that until we have the direction from the trust itself in what the vision is going forward, one person can't speak for an entire board. So I just think it's going to give us more direction after we meet. But we still need to do the work. I mean, the Planning Board's going to, as far as zoning is concerned, it's you guys that will make these decisions.
And I mean, I guess I'm just saying that there is also happenstanceal affordable housing that should be allowed for as well within your, you know, if you're, when you're discussing it, like what that might look like.
Absolutely.
Can I ask a question?
Wes, hang on one second for me.
Yep.
That's really helpful context for us, and we can certainly have a more dedicated conversation about that and probably have a more connected to the Housing Trust at some point in the process. Is there anything that you would like to add about the other kind of green box items that can help us understand exactly what you were looking for with this priority?
Courtney, let me just address the resident that spoke. Wes, I think what we're going to do is get through the entire presentation and take all of the questions and answers at the end, just so we can continue to let the presentation move along. So. Thank you. So Andrea's talking about the other box, the understanding what is regulated through bylaws and what other Planning Board rules and regulations may cover outside of bylaw. Do you want to speak to that, Lisa, or just?
Sure. That, that is a question that, that our board has because there are a series of other regulations within our purview governing the application for special permits, site plan review, and for subdivisions. And those are documents that are available on the website, but they're not part of the bylaw. So what, and we don't need an explanation now. We want to keep it on our radar, and we're looking for sort of professional guidance from MAPC of how, how we should make sure that the regulations mesh with the bylaw, and then to understand how we revise regulations if and when we need to and what our authority is there. So that's really something that we're just looking for professional guidance on from MAPC.
Andrea's giving us a positive head shake and a smile. I think she understands.
Yeah, that's really helpful. I think that makes total sense. I think I just wasn't understanding how it was written on the bullet list. Are there any other things that you'd like to share about any of these items now, or should we just keep kind of rolling and discuss towards the end?
I think we should just move forward with the presentation, do questions and answers at the end.
Okay. And so we wanted to share the project timeline, just to give you a sense of the different activities that will be happening over the next year. We'll be meeting with you all, that's the yellowish diamonds on the screen, several times over the course of the project. So we'll try to meet with you both before community forums to make sure that we're taking the information that you want to the public. And then after we do a community event, we'll be coming back to you to share what we heard and sort of the next steps of the phase. Once we kind of get direction and initial direction this evening, then we'll start drafting amendments focusing on the reorganization, since we know that's a higher priority to try to get to the Maytown meeting. And then as we start to have more direction from both you and the public, then we'll work on some of the more substantive amendment options. We'll also be doing outreach with zoning ambassadors, which I'll talk more about in a minute. And this is a group that will help the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen really broaden the reach of the project so that as many folks can get involved in the process as possible. And then in the fall, hopefully, we'll have several amendments and options for you to take to some public hearings and get vetted with the community before the November town meeting. So that's sort of a high level where we're heading over the next few months. And the zoning ambassadors, I know that there have been a few questions about this. This is kind of a new model of trying to incorporate lots of different voices in the process. So zoning ambassadors are ideally a diverse group of Essex residents and business owners, different stakeholders who may or may not be involved, you know, in town government or boards and committees, but they do represent different areas of town and different perspectives. And the role of those zoning ambassadors is really to help us make sure that our community engagement is going to meet the needs of the residents and meet them where they want, how they want to interact with this process. They'll help us to make sure that if there are local groups and organizations that we can connect through, then who those are and how best to connect with them. And then there'll also be just another group that can help us spread the word about community events. I want to clarify that zoning ambassadors, they're not expected to be experts in zoning. We're not going to recruit them to help us draft the bylaws or do any of that kind of technical work. They also are not expected to always be supportive of the proposed changes going through the process. We know that everyone, you know, will have different opinions about different things. We really see the zoning ambassadors as being champions for the overall project and trying to just get people to provide input and make this an inclusive process. We heard that there were a few questions about what the obligation of a zoning ambassador is. So this model really starts off with a longer session that ideally we could do in person that can be more of like an informal workshop where Courtney and I will meet with the zoning ambassadors and talk about what community engagement is, the different options for doing community engagement, and how to do coalition building around just understanding and getting people to be interested in the project. We'll also do a stakeholder analysis to really understand who are the different people that should be involved, and especially through the adoption process. And then we'll lean on those zoning ambassadors to really help us strategize the best way to engage. After that first session, we see two virtual sessions, maybe 60 to 90 minutes, where we can really do deep dives in messaging, so making sure that how we're talking about different planning and zoning topics are clear and concise and, you know, understandable to people who don't do zoning every day. And then also, we'll want to make sure that we're touching base after our first big community event to make sure that we are kind of hitting the mark. If we didn't have as much turnout as we wanted, how can we do more the next time? Sort of just debrief that first initial forum. And then from there, it'll be a lot of probably like email updates from us as the project moves along, as we plan different events and carry out that community engagement strategy, helping to share flyers or information on, you know, social media or bulletin boards, however the best communication networks are. And then we'll have, like we did in phase one, several community forums are scheduled for this project because we know that there's so much that we're trying to do over the next year. And so the first will be likely in March, a visiting session where we can continue to build on what we heard in phase one about what people really want to get out of zoning and how it can really help to get the town where they want to be or where they want to stay and sustain and prosper. And then this will also help us to understand how future development and redevelopment should look, and that will inform bylaw amendments down the road. We'll talk a little bit about Section 3A later, but we do have a few community forums that are built in to focus on that if the town does need to make adjustments to comply. And then we can also use these forums to talk about other topics that are related to the bylaw improvements. And it is likely that the Planning Board will have a separate public hearing, perhaps in March or April, just simply on the reorganization, not substantive changes of the bylaw. And I think we can get into that a little later when we're going through the annotated outline. Once we have more bylaw amendments fully drafted, we'll do another community forum that will pair with an online open house. So this will be sort of like a more robust survey where if you can't make it to the forum, but you're still really interested as a resident in what is being proposed, and you can kind of go to this online webpage, read the information, and provide comments on the different amendments. We'll also do virtual office hours, so this will be an opportunity for residents and others to chat with MAPC or Planning Board members to get a better understanding of certain changes that are being proposed. And then in September and October, we'll do the Planning Board public hearings where the final versions of the bylaw amendments can be shared with the public. And then any comments received can be refined into the final drafts before they're put as warrant articles for the town meeting in the fall. And lastly, we do have the same project webpage that we used for phase one, but we did update it to reflect that we're starting on phase two. And I wanted to point out that there is an option for people to go and sign up to get email updates on the project. And if you are talking to folks out in the community, we would encourage you to kind of point them there so that they can get updates about any of the events that we're doing, or, you know, once an event is done and we send a wrap-up or a summary of what we heard, they'll get all of those updates to their email to stay up to date with the project. So now I'll turn it over to Courtney, and he'll talk about the 3A compliance and the work that he's been doing on that side of the project.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Courtney Lewis. I'm a senior planner at MAPC. And as Andrea mentioned earlier, we worked together on this project in phase one. So doing a quick recap of Section 3A requirements. Section 3A requires that each community have at least one zoning district of reasonable size where multifamily housing is permitted by right. The district must have a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre. It cannot have any age restrictions. It must be suitable for families with children. And depending on the community type, must be located within a half-mile of a commuter rail station. Each community is categorized as a specific community type. And that's based on access and proximity to MBTA transit stations. And in Essex, the town was designated as a adjacent small town. And with this particular community type, there is no minimum land area. So as long as it meets the unit capacity and the minimum gross density requirements, then the district would, would comply. So taking a look at the chart, can you go back just a second? So taking a look at the chart on, on the screen now, the minimum unit capacity for the town of Essex is 83. And this is a number that DHCD came up with based on the number of total housing units in the town. As I said, there is no commuter rail station or located within the town limits. So there is no minimum land area, and there is no specific requirements for the district to be located within a certain distance of a station. So the town wants to use the existing downtown zoning district for compliance, and that's the district that we tested in the model. It's approximately 90 acres in size and includes 123 parcels. The, the hatched area- The hatched areas that you see on the screen, the red hatching is, this, the area is known as the density denominator, and it totals roughly thirty-three acres of the entire, out of the ninety acres of the entire district. And it represents land that's deducted from the total district land area in order to come up with the unit capacity calculation. So based on, and that, that deduction includes things like hydrologic features, protected and restricted open space, wellhead protection areas, and Title V setbacks. And those are the areas that are shaded in the, in the pinkish red color. Next slide. So I plug, when I, when I plug the town's existing zoning into the model, it, there were several inputs that had to be plugged into the model. And that included things like lot size, lot coverage, building height, and parking requirements in the district. And based on those parameters, the model unit capacity for the district came out to be seven hundred and fifty-seven units. And with a, with a ratio of twenty-three dwelling units per acre. This is in excess of six hundred and seventy-four units. As I mentioned earlier, the town is only required to provide eighty-three, eighty-three units. And so based on the inputs from the model, the downtown district is compliant with section three A. So in terms of next steps, Dana, there is a deadline to, for the town to submit its action plan, which simply states how the town plans to proceed with complying with section three A. Dana has already started to prepare that for submission. And once those, those items are submitted to DHCD for review, they will then determine, or they will then confirm that the town is indeed in compliance with section three A.
So hopefully that comes back that you all are in compliance, and we can really focus on some of these other bylaw and part of this process. So thinking about-
Question at this point, please.
I didn't hear you, Wes, sorry.
I'd just like to ask a little point of clarification or a question for clarification on that last set of slides. They are saying that our downtown district excluding the hash marks, which would be the FEMA flood zones or whatever, is capable of housing seven hundred and fifty-three units?
That's the capacity. That doesn't mean that would happen. It means that through the calculations that are based, and I don't understand them myself, but through the, looking at the areas that are available and what could conceivably be put there, they calculate a capacity. And as long as we, so that's the actual capacity of the area, and the guideline requirements are significantly below that. So we're just trying to compare those numbers and make sure that we come in under that number.
So they're not taking into consideration any of the parking needs, sewer needs, water needs?
So Wes, Wes, I can answer some of that. Unfortunately, the section three A MBTA communities' housing was not as well thought out as one would have hoped. And I don't, they did not take in parking, well, they did take in parking, and I'll explain that in a moment. They didn't take in sewer capacity, water capacity, things such as that. We do meet based on the number that we have available and what we actually have in existence. We did, we are submitting our application to the state, saying that we believe we're in compliance, we're waiting for an approval or denial, we believe will be approved, but they do want an action plan. When we reached out and said, what's the action plan consist of, the state basically said, we don't know, we're not prepared for that, we don't know what we actually require yet. So we are still waiting patiently. As far as the parking requirements, the point of the section three A MBTA communities' housing needs was that it's supposed to be built within a half mile of an MBTA station to make it so that this is housing for commuters. These are, in theory, people that either bicycle or walk to a commuter rail to commute into the city. So parking was considered, and the point is that parking is not needed for the people living in these dwellings.
I understand that part, but we're not within a half mile.
Which is-
Make accommodations for transportation, or either we're gonna-
So I, correct. And so-
We're sort of answering for that, or there's no way we're gonna put seven hundred and fifty-three units.
We don't have to. That is not a requirement. We don't have to. We just have to say that we have the ability to.
What they're saying is, is capability based on their calculations of putting seven hundred and fifty-three units in the downtown district.
So Wes, when you read section three A, you have to be able to put seven hundred and fifty units within a half mile, depending on, for us, eighty-three.
No, seven hundred and fifty-seven is a totally theoretical number. Our assigned number from section three A is eighty-three.
But it's based on population. It's based on population and how you're categorized. So we used to be an MBTA community. Town administrator Zubricki spent a lot of time recategorizing us to adjacent small towns, so we don't have to hit those numbers.
I've just got a little, I take a little umbrage with-
Wes, we have the ability to put seven hundred and fifty in. We're only required to put eighty-three in. So we were just doing a calculation to verify what our potential was in the downtown district area, and it was seven hundred and fifty something, and, but we only need to allow for eighty-three. Right. We don't even need to have eighty-three, we just need to be able to have, ability to have those eighty-three.
Right.
The model does not, the model does not dictate that this will be built. It simply tests the existing zoning based on the town's defined district. The bound, the boundary that the town has created and designated as their section three A district, it's a, a quick and dirty calculation. It does not, based on existing zoning parameters. And it's more of a tool to signal to a community whether they need to make adjustments to the zoning in order to meet that, that minimum requirement, which for Essex is eighty, only eighty-three. So-
Even only, I understand the eighty-three part because we've got the reduced requirements. And that's a good thing. I would suggest that you not discuss the seven hundred and something units being capable when you start trying to present this to the town. We went through this once before, a few years back, when someone came up with pretty close to the same numbers based on the zoning that was in place. But the factors that are gonna prevent that, mostly sewage and water and parking. And then you throw in the FEMA flood zone, I mean, that whole, most of that section is subject to fifteen-foot tides on occasion, which, that's a whole nother issue. But even eighty-three-
So Wes, I don't mean to cave in, but we don't need to present this to the town.
Into downtown realistically, and look at the straight face, say that someone has the capability of doing this. I seriously doubt.
But this isn't something we need to present to the town. MAPC is helping us demonstrate that we're compliant, and we filled out the form, it's due January thirty-first, we demonstrated we're compliant. And that's pretty much, right now, the end of the story, because we don't need to give them an action plan, because there's no action to take, because we're compliant. So this is a box that's checked, and we can move on with the project. And it's just part of making sure that in the process of the project, we didn't have to account for this. We have investigated, we don't have to account for it, and, like I said, box is checked and we move on.
No adjustments to our current bylaws that we have to make-
No.
Regulations in order to comply.
We don't have to make any changes to comply. We are compliant now. We are all set, we are done with this. There's nothing, we don't need to incorporate this into our bylaw project, which is the point of the exercise, to check the compliant box so we can not worry about it.
Okay. I'll back, I'll back off, but I'm, I'm not believing, and you probably haven't heard the last of me.
That's okay, Wes. We, we love hearing from you. All right.
I've been around a little bit, and I don't wanna see us get railroaded into something. Okay.
Courtney, were you gonna continue, or were we moving, or Andrea?
I think that I'll do a couple more slides, and then Courtney will walk us through the outline.
Thank you.
So, so we just wanted to reiterate that what we're trying to do with this phase of work is address some of the recommendations from the zoning diagnostic, looking at establishing your current zoning districts and exploring where you may want to do new districts, if that's something that you want to explore. Looking at if dimensional standards and use regulations should be updated. And again, how to make the bylaw more user-friendly, and how to make sure that the public is involved in this process. So to make sure that we're all on the same page with both the reorganization and then the more substantive changes that could be coming down the line. We do have an annotated outline of the new bylaw that I think you all received ahead of this meeting. This shows how we propose taking your existing regulations and reorganizing them into a new format to make it more user-friendly. And you had a lot of different pieces that were kind of similar, but kind of strewn throughout the bylaw, so trying to make it easy for someone who's not familiar to find the section that they're looking for. And then throughout the annotated outline, there are topics in red that will definitely be things that we'll want to vet with the public and with you all more closely. And then there are some things that are administrative changes, things that we consider recodification items that are not changing anything as far as the regulations go. It's merely helping to make sure that your bylaw is easily understood, administered, consistent with what's required of state law and case law. And then we did try to make sure that we were noting those planning board priorities that you had sent us, showing how those are going to be addressed as we go through the reorganization and the potential amendments. We do want to note that through phase one and through thinking through phase two, there is a potential approach that we can do with this that I think will kind of align with both sides of the, the public that we heard during phase one. We know that you have the general district, but your bylaw is not very clear that the general district exists. It's just sort of assumed that you have a general district. So through this process, we hope, we recommend that you could codify, make it clear that everything shown here on the map that is in white is the general district. And then we can apply some form-based aspects that can maintain your current flexibility that you already have within your general zone, but it can start to incorporate standards for balancing the impacts to adjacent properties and environment, the things that we heard from residents, they were, you know, not happy with your current bylaw. So by doing this, we can use your general zone, not have to create a lot of new districts if you all aren't ready to do that or have interest in doing that. And we can instead refine the general zone to, you know, perhaps regulate development based on what kind of street you're on. If you're on a, a small residential street, then maybe less intense development is allowed. Also, we could do by building type. So if you're building a commercial building, maybe you have additional regulations than a residential building. You could continue to regulate uses in a clearer way by doing this, and then also making sure that your site plan review and special permit processes still can apply, but being clear how that works in your general zone. So that was kind of one approach that we wanted to get your feedback on, and then we'll walk through the annotated outline, and I'm hoping that once I click this, y'all can see. This probably is very small on your screen, right? Can you see this okay?
I would go up bigger.
How's that?
That's fine.
Okay. So the annotated outline, the first page just sort of describes what I just went over. And then it does note, like, like we said earlier in the meeting, that there are a few topics that you all have identified as things that you want to explore through this process, but recognize that they likely will not be included at this point in the process. And then the reorganization is shown here in this table. And so I'll turn it over to Courtney to talk through the reorganization and then the different sections.
Okay. So as Andrea mentioned, the sections of the bylaw highlighted, of the outline highlighted in blue indicate administrative changes. This includes things like clarifying existing language and updating terminology, relocating text to be more intuitive, to more intuitive locations within the bylaw, and, and also incorporating new tables that, that summarize existing standards or procedures. The red text indicates sections of the bylaw that would be, that would be more substantive edits, and these are areas where we'll definitely need significant outreach. These sections take into account the lists that Andrea went through earlier from the planning board, the list of planning, planning board priorities. It also includes things like updating definitions and uses and updating development standards for the town. So looking at the outline, we, we recommend reorganizing the bylaw and moving from the current fourteen subsections to, to ten. And I will quickly go through each, each section and just summarize what each, the subject matter of each section, and then we can open things up for questions. So in section one, where we plan to consolidate general information related to the overall establishment of the zoning bylaw, and include an updated purpose and intent to emphasize priorities and goals that have been articulated throughout both the first and second phases of, of the project. For section two, we will, this section will remain as the definition section, will carry for key terms that are currently located in section six dash two point one. And we'll also consolidate terms that are scattered throughout the current bylaw. And we'll also consolidate terms that are scattered throughout the current bylaw. We'll also provide a list of recommendations on terms that should be updated or removed. And again, this is not really making major changes. These will be recommendations and we will proceed based on guidance provided by the Section three is a new section, and it establishes the town's base and overlay zoning districts. As, as Andrea mentioned, we recommend codifying the, the area currently referred to as the, the general zoning district into the bylaw. And then we also will consolidate the existing established zoning districts. And for those, for those sections, we're recommending or proposing a consistent structure that contains an overall purpose statement, a brief character description of the, of the, of the, of the district, and then also outline use standards for each district. Section four will cover use regulations and include the new proposed table of allowed uses. This was a recommendation from the, directly from the zoning audit. And we plan to take existing uses that are listed and provide additional detail. For instance, one of the comments that we heard during phase one is that there wasn't a clear distinction between industrial uses that are currently listed in the bylaw outside of square footage. So we would provide some additional detail and, and clarity to uses. Another example is the issue we, that came up with the construction of the new public safety building in town, where there wasn't a defined use for, for that type of building in the current bylaw. So just assure, just ensuring that uses are, are defined in the updated bylaw. Section five will cover dimensional standards for all districts and any exceptions to those standards. It will have a consolidated table of dimensional requirements and that, that specify things like lot size, setbacks, floor area ratio, lot coverage, and building height. This, organizing this information into a consolidated table will make it easier for, for the town as well as users of the bylaw to compare things across the multiple, the different zoning districts in town. Section six will cover additional regulations and include several provisions currently located in section six, five of the, of the, of the current bylaw. Section seven will be a, a new section that contains both townwide and location-specific development standards. And this section will cover things like site configuration and building placement, access and connectivity, landscaping, screening, and fencing, as well as the town's sign regulations. Section eight will carry for the town's existing OSRD, open space, OSRD provisions. And these are currently located in six dash 13 of the, of the existing bylaw. Section nine will be a new section that covers non-conforming uses and structures. And finally, section 10 will be administration and enforcement. And this section will, will describe roles, power, powers in the organizational framework for the, the planning board, the building inspector, the board of appeals, the, the zoning board. And it will also specify the procedures for obtaining building permits, for a site plan review, for special permits, and variances. And with that, I think we will just open things up for discussion. There are a few question, a few prompts that were included in our presentation, but we, essentially, we want to get your first impressions on the proposed organization. We want to hear if, if you noticed anything that was missing or miscategorized. And we, we also like to hear what, your thoughts on the approach to modifying the zoning.
Thank you, Courtney and Andrea. This is, it's, it's a, it's an awesome start, I think. And what I, I just want to provide a little context too for the planning board and, and as far as when we go through this sort of annotated outline, is that what they have strived to do is take everything in our bylaw and essentially re-home it in format in this new outline. So that in, in the process of creating this new outline, all of our current material can be migrated in here and, and just basically reorganized. So not unlike, you know, having, having the, the new signs on the exit, formerly exit, such and such. We can even in our bylaw have clarity between the old version and where the new sections have, have gone in this new outline. But everything is in there, it's just reorganized. And then with things in their new places, then that gives us the opportunity to go through it more carefully and, and update whatever sections we see fit to at any given town meeting in their new home. So, so this is the, the reorganization is really the first step. And then MAPC will continue to work with us on updating and rewriting those parts that need it. And I think the other thing that's important, particularly for the board of selectmen to understand in this process, is that in working with MAPC, we're going to do a very comprehensive and try and get as much professional expertise from them in this process. So there will be a lot more accomplished by MAPC and the planning board in the course of their engagement with, which lasts through June 2024. That isn't to say that we're going to have to bring all of that to town meetings right away, because we want to sort of work this in a process so that we don't come to town meeting and say, here's a whole new bylaw, what do you think? We want to be able to do it in a stepwise fashion so that people can understand and have time to digest the changes that we're making. So that's why migrating everything as is into a new format is really the first step, so that people feel confident, can understand the new format, the need for the new format. And it's reorganizing all the material we have in a more user-friendly, workable way. So anyway, I just wanted to put that in a little bit of context. And, and then if you guys have questions, comments, this is, we can start now. Obviously, this is, the conversation isn't going to end tonight, this is just the start of it. So if there's background you want or clarity that you want, this is a good time to, to ask Andrea and Courtney some of those questions for their guidance. And you selectmen folks who you can ask also.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea, Courtney. I think the reorganization would work well. I think just adding, you know, just updating it so it doesn't look like it came directly from a word processor would definitely help. But I just, and this is maybe more of a question for everybody in this room, is any additions, are they assumed that they would have to be brought to town vote? So even if it's down to a definition like Courtney suggested?
Yeah. If, if we want to change where a comma goes in a sentence, that's a town meeting vote, because a bylaw is an official record document and any, and I'm, I'm, I'm being silly about the comma, but very literally, any change in how that document is formatted or anything that could conceivably change the intent is a town meeting vote. So, and, and that's one reason that I'm sort of stressing the idea of reorganizing everything with all of our language as is, although if there is a punctuation correction, we could make that. But, but the intent to, to just reorganize the material that we have, and when it's in its new place, that would give us the opportunity to selectively go section by section, looking at those areas that we want to work on improving.
So, so just, just from a 50,000 foot level, none, none of, none of the changes or, or none of the reorganization that you're contemplating at this stage would put any use or activity or that is currently in compliance, out of compliance?
Exactly. There, there would be no substance, substant-
Substantive.
Thank you. That, none of those kind of changes in the first step, which would-
Right.
Literally be taking the language as we have it in our bylaw and just giving it a new section number and moving it to a new spot.
So we're just basically reorganizing and setting it up for a comprehensive, it'll be easier to go about it if it's better organized.
Correct. So, so that said, there's some, there's some places where, for example, they're proposing dimensional tables. So we don't have dimensional tables right now, but we would be taking all the dimensions that are found sprinkled throughout our bylaw and putting them in a table.
But it wouldn't change any dimensions?
We're not changing the dimensions, we're not changing any of the dimensions, we're not changing any of the uses, we're not changing which uses those dimensions apply to. We're just taking the dimensional requirements from different areas and putting them in a table. So the intent and, and how the bylaw would be enforced would not change. We wouldn't, the, the, the situation of any particular property, business, anything like that would not be affected by the reorganization. It may be affected later down the road when we start to do other changes, but step one would not, would not impact the enforcement or the interpretation of the bylaw at all. It would just make it easier to move through.
Lisa, would this include visual illustrations of the dimensions or would that be included? Charts and-
It, it, it could be. It, it doesn't need to be at this stage, but it could be. But what I think we want to be mindful of is as we present changes, which are going to be fairly substantial to town meeting, we want to make sure that they are manageable and understandable. So what I would, if we want to introduce diagrams and things like that, I would separate that from the reorganization. So we would have, say, in the spring, an article that would say, here is our new format, all the words are the same, they're just in new spots. And then the next sort of items that we could start to tackle would be, say, definitions, because we're not really going to change any definitions, we're just going to provide a lot more. So we know we ran into, in the Central Conemaugh Point zoning district, we ran into one and a half stories. We don't have a definition for that. So those are the kind of things we would want to go through the bylaw. And with the expert help of the MAPC folks, because they, they understand what definitions are typically required in a bylaw. So we would just build that section out without necessarily changing the things that we've already defined, maybe clarifying them, but adding a lot more definitions that would help people interpret the bylaw. A separate, a separate article and a separate change could be adding those diagrams that interpret the tables and make it easier to use. So as, as we work through this process, it's going to become clear to us what, what sections we want to break out as, as sort of individual articles to act on. The other thing that I do want to put in context for everyone too, is like I said, MAPC is working with us through June of 2024. So that's going to give us the opportunity for annual town meeting in 2023, fall town meeting in 2023, and annual town meeting in 2024, when we still have their guidance. They're going to do a lot of work with us, helping us rewrite the bylaw. And if you can picture, we have a new format in our old bylaw, and we have the new format, and then we get portions of the bylaw rewritten by MAPC. And we have to pick those portions to bring to town meeting to insert in our, our, our bylaw. So it could be that over the course of five years even, we could be picking away at this, but MAPC may write a whole lot more than we bring to town meeting while they're still on board. Because we want to do this in a way that is digestible for people who don't sit on the planning board or necessarily are that familiar with zoning regulations. So MAPC is going to probably do a lot more work by the time the contract is done in June 2024 than we will bring to town meeting yet. We're going to have to roll it out in ways that help people understand and give them a comfort level with what we're proposing. And it's also obviously reflective of what the general population wants to see in bylaw improvements.
Andrea and Courtney, this is Shelley Bradbury. I just wanted to know, as we are recodifying the bylaws, if you're going to take into account just like the simple spelling of how you spell bylaw, because we have a million different ways of spelling it, if we would pick one version and then use that as a standard? So is that the kind of detail you'll be also doing?
Yes. Yeah, we'll be making sure that there are any little editorial errors like that get fixed through this process as well.
And one other question. The idea that you'll be helping and writing the bylaws for us, that we will have input and oversee this. I was wondering if as you do that, or first explain, like, are you using other town bylaws or a template? And if you are using other towns as reference, it would be helpful for the planning board if you could side note where the town is for that particular bylaw, so when we go into do research, at least we have a reference of where this is coming from? That would be helpful.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that.
Andrea, I have a, a question about the process, although I may be jumping down the road a little bit to when the bylaws are actually added, changed, modified, whatever. But you mentioned zoning ambassadors, and I think they could be a fairly important component of this whole process. And I wondered how they are identified and how it'll be ensured that each section of town is represented by them?
Yeah, I can add a little bit, and then I think Lisa, you probably will want to share about what you've been doing. So we collected information about who participated in phase one and tried to note who participated. You know, we're kind of stellar and attended every event and, you know, talked to us, maybe at a focus group. And we shared that information with the, the project steering committee. So Brendan, Lisa were the, the folks who have been working with us to get this phase two started, just as a jumping off point. And then I think that Lisa and some others have been kind of looking at who participated in phase one and then thinking about who else could be good to invite to participate in that way.
It's going to also be a process of talking to people in town and finding people who are willing to invest, it's not a whole lot of time, but there is a little bit of time to get up to speed, and people who are also supportive of the project. And, and one of Andrea's slides showed that being supportive of the project doesn't mean that you're going to necessarily 100% endorse every change that's in there, but in general, you're supportive of updating the bylaw, making it easier to navigate, easier to use, and clearer for, for not only the general public, but also for the planning board, giving us a, a really clear set of guardrails of what, what our responsibilities and our limitations are in the process.
Who finally makes the selection of the ambassadors? Is that you? Is that you?
The, the zoning ambassadors will probably select themselves, because we're looking for volunteers. And if someone is willing and has the time to commit and is supportive of this, we'd welcome them on board. We don't have a fixed number. It's not like we're auditioning for seven zoning ambassadors. If we got, you know, 24 people who want to be zoning ambassadors, come on down. So, because the whole point of the zoning ambassador aspect of this is, is public outreach. So the more the merrier, the more people who are willing to get out there and talk to friends and neighbors and just raise awareness of what's going on. Because so many people aren't aware of the bylaw or some of the, the limitations or what is not addressed or what could be changed. And I think when people become aware of it, they become a lot more engaged. So it's really just a public outreach effort to make sure that people pay attention and, and learn what they need to know as far as how it affects their properties and their property values.
Right. So I think Peter's point though, the real want is that you get a, a set of zoning ambassadors who are diverse and agendaless. Agenda-less potentially.
It's really hard to be agenda-less when you own property in the town.
Right.
But yeah, we, we want people who can be objective. And the, the point of the ambassador is not to necessarily influence someone's opinion or tell them how to vote. It's to say, pay attention to what's going on. We're trying to make changes. We want your input. Because at the end of the day, when we craft any part of the bylaw that is being rewritten, we want it to be reflective of what people want. We don't, we have, we have some things that we'd like to see addressed, which are more from the perspective of facilitating our implementation of the bylaw. But we want to have obviously a bylaw that reflects the values of the town and that people will support. So it's, the public input process is going to be very critical to not only obviously votes at the town meeting for bylaw changes, but for crafting those changes and for getting bylaws that reflect the values of the town and how we want to see the bylaws sort of support the vision that we have for the town.
But at this point, we're just looking at the reorganization, and it seems to make a lot of sense to you guys, and that you guys use those all the time. So this is something that you guys are comfortable with, I'm guessing.
Yeah, the reorganization makes sense. I mean, we need to spend a little bit more time with it, but what, what Andrea and Courtney have proposed is a, a sort of, a more categorized outline that we have, there'd be 10 sections, whether it's nine or 11 when things are finally sorted out. But what it does is it gives us sections where any future changes would have a place to go and they wouldn't necessarily need to go at the end. Because we're looking at sort of overall categories from establishment of districts. So there's a, there's a section that establishes districts. Right now, we have the general use district, we have the downtown district, we have the two little districts out at Canoma Point and three overlay districts. So all of those would be in one spot. If at some point down the road, we started to create more sub-districts in town and, and divided up the general use district somehow, there's already a spot to put it. Because if you look at our current bylaw now, when we did the Southern Canoma Point District and we did the Central Canoma Point District, those were sort of just tacked on at the end. And now there's a, a home for anything that relates to establishing a district. It has a place to go. And if we establish a new one, it just goes after the last one. So it's, it's more, more user-friendly for updating, if you want. And it's also easier to navigate, because you don't need to read through the whole thing to find out what our districts are. You go to the section that says, here are our districts, and you can find out what our districts are. That's just an example of, of how they've categorized things in a way that's sort of different from what we have right now.
It's like taking the hodgepodge and a reset, so it all makes sense.
Yeah, I, I would shy away from calling it a hodgepodge. It's something that's evolved. Our bylaw has evolved over time. In the past 50 years, it, it hasn't really been updated. So this gives us a chance to update it, reorganize it, and put it in a format that's more consistent with what people are familiar with.
So, so I just-
Can I ask?
Go ahead.
So I imagine, I guess this is for Andrea or Courtney, I imagine that there are multiple ways to look at different sections of our bylaws. For instance, special permits. Will you be presenting, you know, a variety so that, I mean, obviously you won't want to do that on everything, but a variety so we have a, a view to what kind of options we might have?
Yes. So I think after tonight's meeting, Courtney and I will want to sort of come up with a method for presenting the different sections. And then how we typically will do this with any bylaw revision or any time that we're looking to update a zoning section in a bylaw, we'll usually try to show some different ways that other communities are handling this topic, so that you can kind of see where you stand and then where, you know, another community that you may be wanting, you have similarities with, how they're handling it, to give you some different options. And so you can keep how you're doing it if you decide that that's how you like it, or you can modify it based on some different approaches. So we'll try to give you some different options and then kind of share the trade-offs of, you know, if you go with this route, then this is what could occur. If you keep it this way, this is what would happen.
Just a question about the zoning ambassadors. In the first phase, both boards picked and nominated members of the community to be interviewed, and there were seven of them. And they were a diverse group of people in ages and genders and who mostly knew a lot about the bylaw. It might be helpful if we sent them an email or asked them to consider being zoning ambassadors, because it was something we all sort of agreed on as a suggestion.
That, that was our starting point, where, that was the list that we provided to the town. We captured all that information, everyone that registered for the zone, for the forums, and anyone that we interviewed, or anyone who participated in a focus group. We gathered all that contact information. And so I, I just want to note that the way that I view zoning champions are, it's more like a pep squad, or they're like, like cheerleaders for, for change. They're, they're assisting us in helping to minimize any misinformation about the project or those changes, just like Lisa briefed the, the board and the board of selectmen about, you know, what this really is and what it actually means. We're hoping that we'll have more direct conversations with those individuals so that they can help then go out into the community and be able to, you know, provide facts, answer questions, or help put people who have interests or concerns in, in direct contact with the project team.
Thank you, Courtney.
Yep. And I'll just add, through this process, we can also develop communication materials, and that can be something that we equip the zoning ambassadors with, so that it's not just the, the bylaw legal jargon, but that maybe there's a one-pager that describes particular changes, or like Courtney said, give kind of the facts in a more digestible way. So that's something that we'll be doing along this way to help that, just the public understand what can sometimes be a complex topic.
Thank you, Andrea. And just because we are meeting as two boards and we have complete full boards this evening, so everyone should be on the same page and understand that Courtney and Andrea have done a lot of work to this point. I know we, we've seen a lot of the product in meetings, but we've had a small working group. The small working group has been Simone, Lisa, myself, Brendan, and Dana Menon, who's our town planner, she's out of the country and couldn't join us this evening. But a lot of what you're seeing in the presentation this evening, we already had the opportunity to view, send comments back. And Courtney and Andrea have been great about sending us the list of zoning champions. We've sat down, we've narrowed it down, we've, we've looked at different, like, who's in different sections of town, who we think would be beneficial in getting, spreading the word. So our first 10 zoning champions are the 10 people here this evening that serve on these two boards, right? Because we all, we're, we're getting educated on what we're trying to promote at town meeting and how we're looking for support. The other people, Lisa and I talked about it, and we just said, it doesn't make sense for us to start contacting the people on this list, because I know Andrea and Courtney were excited about us. Who are they? Let's reach out to them. And we said, we don't even know what we're doing or what we're asking of the zoning champions. So why don't we get through the kickoff meeting, find out what the expectation is, what the time commitment is, what we're going to be asking of them, what's the material? And then we feel more comfortable getting out into the community and speaking. And I think that the same holds true. I think, you know, Judd and Shelley and Matt, if you're out there chatting with a friend, you can say, hey, would you be interested in just spreading the word that we're looking to reorganize an annual town meeting, so it's a better format? So people, I think, as we just have everyday conversations, will become our zoning champions. So we didn't want to, so they did provide us all of the information from the surveys. They've been great about it, so I don't want you to think that we don't have that list. We just opted not to start reaching out until after tonight's kickoff.
Right. Because the information that, that Courtney and Andrea provided regarding the roles and the duties of a zoning ambassador is kind of outlined tonight, so we can send people to, to view this meeting if they want to. It's also a little bit more as far as the time demands. There's a training session and there's a couple of update sessions, things like that. So having that information is going to make it a lot easier for us to start to bug people and ask them if they want to be a zoning ambassador, because we can tell them what we're going to need them to do to help with the project. So we will be talking about, about people. That doesn't sound right, but as far as trying to sort of make a more formal list of people who that we, we would start contacting and asking if they would want to be ambassadors. So anyone on either of these boards is welcome to volunteer their friends, or their enemies if they want. And it, and like I said, the more the merrier with this sort of effort, because the, the whole point of the effort is getting the word out as far and wide as we can to make sure people understand what we're trying to accomplish, how we're trying to accomplish it in the timeline, and the fact that whether you're a zoning ambassador or not, there's going to be a lot of opportunity for public input, public outreach, just to be able to understand how the community wants the bylaw updated to reflect the values, like I said before. So we will be talking about that at the next meeting too.
My final comment, just kind of to piggyback on this, is we, we have two former members of the planning board, Kim Drake and Wes Burnham, who, you know, served the community for a lot of years and collectively a huge amount of time. And they will both tell you that they worked so hard and just tirelessly at bringing zoning stuff to town meeting, just to get it shot down and to try over and over and over again. And, you know, the worst thing you can do is let history repeat itself and not get the word into the community. So if anybody follows our surrounding communities, Manchester just had this same kind of zoning recodification. It 10, it kind of blew up a town meeting, because people were like, we didn't know anything about it. Well, we hear that as well. So our goal tonight is to say, just chat with your friends, become a zoning ambassador, because we want to get the word out. We don't want people to come to town meeting and say, we knew nothing about this. So get it on social media, chat with people at the post office, it, just let them know. And this isn't, we're not trying to change our bylaws, we're just looking for some structure right now, and then it will be piecemeal, anything that we think we need to address to make things, to get more protections in place for property owners.
So Simone asked me earlier if we had the link to the MAPC, PC website on our town website. And we did, but it was, if you look on the screen behind you, the thing here, we want to hear from you about Essex zoning. We had that up in 2022, but it got buried in all the town notices. So now I've got it stuck to the top, it won't move down. And if you click on that, you can see that there's a link to the comprehensive zoning diagnostic report, and then the dedicated website comes right up. So just tell people to go to the town homepage that we want to hear from you. Headline is what they need to click on, and they'll get tapped into all of this. And as Andrea mentioned, the dedicated project website has other ways to interact and even ways to sign up for email and so, email notices and such.
So Brendan, I, I guess this question's for you. Can you differentiate the role of the board of selectmen and the planning board in, in this? What is our role in putting forth these?
So generally, as the executive branch of the town, the selectmen had to be supportive of the grants and contracts with folks like MAPC in order to be able to bring these resources to the planning board and ultimately to the residents of the town.
Right.
So that was your initial role.
Right.
Also, of course, you're the folks who put things on town meeting warrants, and as the planning board comes up with ideas and concepts, there'll always be this interplay, chance to ask questions, understand what it means to the town, and then actually assist them with getting it onto the warrant. So there's that type of role, and there's also, of course, just as elected officials being out in the town-
Right.
Talking it up to people and providing your input as necessary, is what I would say. Whereas the planning board is going to be more technical about its approach, and they're going to be probably driving, as seven other elected officials, driving the-
Developing the actual-
Yes, I would say.
The chain, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Just in line with that, will all of our public meetings with MAPC be as a group? Or will some of them?
I mean, I will always be there. I think it's, I think it would be important for the board of selectmen to be joint posted. If we can make it, we certainly will.
I think we will joint post, no matter what.
Joint post always. I mean, I think it's important for us to show a unified front. I mean, we are seven elected officials that are pushing this effort forward, because it's, it's long overdue and much needed. So I think we should always be joint posted and certainly make every effort to be here.
And on that note, I think in, in our sort of steering committee, we should reconvene soon, hopefully before the next planning board meeting, just to have a quick chat, to walk through schedule, so that we can start to pick some dates and make it very clear about when we're going to be having public forums, where people would be able to listen and weigh in and, and just talk to some of the ideas and the changes that are going on. So that's going to be important too, is to sort of set that schedule soon. And then, and then that way, everyone will know what dates we'll be on the hook for.
I just have one final question. So any, any bylaw that we bring to town, town council will always review it as the final? Okay.
Always. So are there any other questions from the board of, the planning board or the board of selectmen? Because I do want to see if we can open it up for questions and answers with the public that's joining us remotely. Judd, you have any? No? Matt?
No.
No? Peter? No?
Just stretching?
Nobody? Okay. So I'm going to turn the floor over to participants that are joining us remotely. I'm looking at the attendees. I can see most everybody at this point. If you're interested in speaking or asking questions, please unmute yourself, identify yourself with your name and address, and we would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Don't all speak at once?
All right, I'll speak up.
Tina, name and address, please.
Tina Lane, 21 Lanes Road. Can I assume that you're going to show the new format? Will it be available so people could take their highlighters and, and compare the words from the old and the new versions before town meeting?
It will be available as soon as the selectmen sign the warrant and send it to print.
That's my question. Thanks.
March 27th. So Tina, the date's March 27th, so that'll give you five weeks to highlight, highlight every page. Is there anybody else that would like to speak or ask questions? Is there anybody else that would like to speak or ask questions?
Can you tell Brendan if anyone is trying to?
No one's unmuting.
Okay. Okay. I think we can move on, because obviously, this is an introduction, and it's hard for people to formulate questions about something that's still in the very formative stage at this point. And the outline is, you know, it hasn't been shared with anyone beyond the planning board and the Board of Selectmen yet. So as we refine that, that's definitely a document that we'll try and make public when we have a, well, it's obviously a public meeting, public document. People are welcome to it. But as we develop it, I think it's going to be more informative, because we are in the early stages of putting it together. Well, Andrea and Courtney are in the early stages of putting it together. We're in the early stages of reading it.
Andrea, you mentioned that you were going to have a shared document space. Do you know when you'll start doing that?
We can set that up as soon as you would like to have one, and we can start kind of something like tonight's presentation, the outline, all of those materials. We can get that set up next week.
For the, for the planning board, as you guys know, this is obviously an off week. We meet first and third Wednesdays of every month for regular planning board business, and this is sort of a special project. And the idea this evening was to meet with the Board of Selectmen and with MAPC. So next Wednesday, when we have our February 1st regular planning board meeting, we will have this on the agenda, this topic, this outline on the agenda, so that we will have the opportunity ourselves to talk about it. So after tonight's presentation, if you spend a little bit more time with outline, we can start to hone in on, yeah, we like this, or what about that? So if we start to collectively come up with some suggestions, we can transmit those back to MAPC. But this is something that we'll keep on our agenda regularly, so that we have posted every meeting, have the opportunity to talk about it. But what I think, and we'll talk about it also at our next meeting, sorry, this is just a little bit of planning board business. We have, we have the opportunity to do the 1623 setup like we are this evening and have a publicly broadcast meeting and have it taped. And we will, again, have the conversation about remote participation and having people join us. But I also want to continue to have, I would like to, and it's a group decision, to have our regular business meetings, which are the first and third Wednesdays, downstairs on the second floor, because the planning board office is there. We have the ability to bring our documents up on the computer, and we still have day-to-day business that we have to take care of, but we'll keep this on the agenda so that we can talk about it anytime we want to. If that makes sense to everyone. And we'll also, you know, after we look at the schedule back out of the March 27th warrant date and those sort of things, we'll start to look at what other meetings we may have, as sort of a special meeting with maybe the Board of Selectmen or MAPC each month to try and continue to work on this project. But we'll talk about that next Wednesday with the calendar in front of us. Carrie?
Great. Is there anything else we need to cover?
I do not think so. I think I'm set. We would like to obviously give Andrea and Courtney an opportunity to give us some marching orders.
I think the biggest thing is look at the outline, give us any feedback that you think of after tonight, and then let us know how the zoning ambassador recruitment is going, so that we can try to schedule that first session. And then we're anxious to hear, you know, back from DHCD, once they are in the place to review the compliance model that Courtney talked about. And then we'll set up a steering committee meeting to, as you mentioned, Lisa, think about the dates, the key dates for our next planning board meeting, and then the first forum, all of those important first dates.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you both.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Selectmen.
So moved.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Second. So Simone and Matt, thank you. All those in favor.